Let's call an immediate order. Start off with the Pleasalies, please.
The Pleasalies to the flag of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to acknowledge the little guy right there for taking your hat off. I appreciate that, bud. Good job. At our notice, this meeting was advertised in the Esber Park Press and the Beacon on June 6, 2004 by posting the notice in the Fork River Post Office and the Local Harbor Post Office by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Armato?
Here.
Mr. Conity?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here via phone.
Thank you. Mr. Armato?
Here.
Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Present.
Okay. So, as you guys can hear, Mrs. Walker is participating via phone. We have a resolution to allow this for tonight, so I'm going to try to get a motion for this resolution.
Motion.
Second. Thank you. So, this resolution is permitting remote member participation and voting due to a familial medical emergency. Move that the Board approve the following resolution: Whereas, the Board believes that in-person meetings are the best way for members to be engaged and participate in the deliberative process, and whereas Board Policy 0131 provides the Board may, under emergency circumstances, suspend the operation of a bylaw policy or regulation and adopt, revise, or abolish a bylaw policy or regulation without prior notice. The emergency adoption, revision, or abolishment of a bylaw policy or regulation shall terminate at the next meeting of the Board or at such earlier date as may be specified by the Board unless further acted upon by the Board in accordance with this bylaw. And whereas, Board Member Linda Walker is unable to attend the June 11, 2024 meeting due to a familial medical emergency but nonetheless wishes to partake in the deliberative process and Board meeting. And whereas, the Board finds that, under these circumstances, it shall suspend its regular practice of in-person attendance and permit Mrs. Walker to attend the meeting via telephone and vote on all matters as if she were present. And whereas, this exception shall apply for the current meeting only unless otherwise authorized by resolution of the Board. Now therefore be resolved by the Lacey Township Board of Education that Board Member Linda Walker shall be permitted to participate and vote in the meeting on June 11, 2024 via telephone, and be it further resolved that such remote participation be conditioned on the ability of the public and Mrs. Walker to be heard as if she were physically present. All right, I'm going to take roll call. Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Present.
No.
No.
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
And Mr. Peters?
Yes, and Mrs. Walker is on her way. She will be arriving here in person.
Thank you. Turn it over to Dr. Pereira.
Okay. Do we have the keyboard? Uh, yes, I thought they're... Okay. School Business Administrator Ms. Ormsby and I are going to represent the tentative budget. Can everybody hear me? Yes, yeah, okay. So, as you know, we presented the tentative budget on March 19th, and much has changed since then. When we presented the tentative budget on March 19th, what we presented was an unbalanced budget because we were experiencing a deficit. So, we have done a lot since then, and we have collaborated, we have met, I don't even know how many times we've met, and I'm going to get into that a little bit in more detail as we go. And most importantly, our goal tonight is going to point out the differences between then and now. So, we all know this chart. We've seen this slide many times. We know the factors that have contributed to the budget deficit. We know, after talking about this so many times, what the last six, seven years of state aid cuts due to S-2 have done to our district. Back then, we knew that the 2% tax levy cap was imposed on us, and we knew that as we were building the budget for the 24-25 school year, we still needed to address many issues, including, and you see that in the bottom right of the slide, contractual responsibilities that rise above 2% in many areas, higher prices in gasoline, insurance premiums, tuition increases outside of our control, transportation costs increases, and of course inflation for just about everything, and we are all too familiar with inflation. Interestingly, and one thing I think is very important to point out, is that the budget for the Lacey Township School District in the 2018-19 school year was $71.1 million. The budget for the 24-25 school year will be $71.3 million, which is a difference of $202,000. And that's what brings us here tonight, for me to reiterate that we don't have a spending problem, we have a revenue problem caused by the state aid reductions that are happening at a far faster rate than we are able to raise taxes beyond the 2% tax levy cap. So, that paints a very, very interesting picture, that in that time span, our budget has only increased by $202,000. So, as I mentioned earlier, the big question, and what we're doing here tonight, is what has changed from the tentative budget presented on March 19th to the tentative budget that we are presenting today? So, I'm going to talk about a lot of things, and I'm going to tomorrow send out a letter to the entire school community that not only is going to outline what we're talking about here tonight, but outline what has happened from March 19th to the present. So, with the new legislation that was signed into law by Governor Murphy, and that happened on May 14th, the Lacey Township School District will recover 45% of the state aid that we were set to lose. So, in other words, that's $1.4 million of the $3.2 million that we were set to lose. Additionally, the legislation grants a one-time opportunity to increase taxes above the 2% tax levy cap, which I already mentioned, allowing us to recoup some of the equivalent funds lost in S-2. So, like I said, our administration and Board, we've been working since then to rework the numbers and propose a solution to close the budget deficit. So, what we've determined is that a one-time additional 9.9% increase in taxes will make it possible for us to do that. So, what does that mean? The budget already included a 2% tax increase, so exceeding that cap increases taxes by an additional 7.2%, which is equivalent to $4.2 million. So, I just wanted to make that clear. In addition to that, we are also very grateful, and we're going to talk about this a little bit later, for the support of the MUA for their recent donation of $420,000 that allowed us to restore three tenure teachers and restore an important elective at the high school, and that position is currently posted. So, a couple of things are at work here. So, this is how we arrived at a balanced budget. Important to note, still includes the reductions that we outlined in the March tentative budget presentation, and those reductions are, we're going to talk about those in the next slide. So, I'm going to say that again. We do have a balanced budget because of the legislation that the Governor passed and the donation from the MUA. We have a balanced budget, and the extra $420,000 is what allowed us to restore four positions: three tenure teachers and one vacancy that we have right now. Okay. So, again, you saw on that first slide, since the inception of S-2, we've been required to make some drastic reductions. We've talked about them over the years, we talked about them in March, we talked about them in April, we talked about them in May. Prior to us even knowing what the state aid figures were going to be, and we learned about that on February 27th, but prior to that, we had already reduced $6.5 million from the budget, and that's what we're going to talk about right now. So, Ms. Ormsby is going to jump up, jump up here and walk us through that, and then I'm going to swing back in. You're not going to jump up.
So, this hasn't changed from our original presentation. We're still going to prepay bus leases and prepay some terminal leave payments in this year's budget from next year. There's a few changes in this slide from the last presentation to this presentation. So, there's the four positions in the very first line. So, we have 22 certified positions that are being eliminated or reduced instead of 26. We have eight full-time positions through attrition, six support staff, including nine vacancies. That's basically the same as the last time. The next one's about the same. We were able to restore a guidance position based on one of the attrition positions. Maintenance is the same. Health benefits changed a little bit based on the change in the certified positions. Social Security is basically the same. There wasn't much change in that, so I, we left that the same. Special Ed's the same, and the contracted services stayed the same. Also, this slideshow, this will be available on the website too tomorrow. There's no change, I don't think, in any of these lines, other than there are some corrections that we made since March, which, so, we went out, we did an RFP for our new auditor. So, between what I budgeted and what our actual fee came in for the auditor, I was able to reduce that amount in the budget. We did a new software vendor for our maintenance ticketing throughout the district and our facility use rentals, so that came in lower, so I was able to reduce that expense. And then, we also had a lower renewal for our content filter. So, I was able to lower that, so that's some of the corrections. So, this is our whole budget. So, from the original tentative to the new tentative is only a little under $100,000 difference. And that's it. But, again, I want to remind everybody where, how we got here over the past eight years. You know, we've cut, including this year, 138 staff members. We've realigned the district. We've cut field trips, we've cut athletics, we've cut co-curriculars. You know, we've done a lot to get us to this spot, and like Dr. Pereira said, we're only $200,000 different than our budget from six years ago. That's, that's a big deal when you think about inflation. $200,000 difference from six years ago. So, we'll go over the grants budget again. This hasn't changed from the last time. It's all exactly the same.
Other than our ESTR's going to fall off.
Right, well, which was the same from, yeah, that we presented the last time. That sunsets September of '24, so all the ESTR funds will be gone. So, this is the, the revenue. So, the changes in the revenue, so you can see the additional $4 million from the last tentative to this tentative for the property tax levy. The categorical state aid stayed the same. So, during this process, we had our county executive, our Executive County Business Official come in and help us through this process and give us some recommendations to change, make changes to our revenues, to our expenses. So, some of her recommendations, we, we took. So, one of them was she wanted us to increase our extraordinary aid estimate $50,000. So, that's that change that you see there from 754, I had it at 704 the last time. Our fund balance, we're utilizing a lot more fund balance from March than, like now than from March. I'll explain that more in another slide. I put the stabilized school budget aid grant and our deficit on the same line, just because it, it's basically the same thing. So, the 6.9 is what our deficit was, now the 1.4, that's the amount of money that we're getting back. That's the 45% of our loss that the state's giving us back. And then the miscellaneous, that includes tuition, interest, childcare, fines. Something else that the Executive County Business Official wants us to start doing is looking into additional revenue sources, which we have been doing, but now she wants us to actually budget for them. So, we're going to start doing things like advertising on buses, we're going to try doing naming rights, so things like that are now budgeted in miscellaneous revenue. Refunds are in there, sales of our S-Rex are in there, use of facilities are, are all in that $1.2 million number. Here's a breakdown of the property tax levy. The top number, that's our current year property tax levy. I broke it down so you could see what the 2% amount was, and then what the additional 7.9% was, or 7.9% is, sorry. So, then the total is now the $58,459 for a total of a 9.9% increase. The debt service property tax levy did not change. So, the total property tax levy is going to be $61 million. This is a breakdown of the state aid. This also did not change. The one thing that we pointed out last time, that I'll point out again, our 18-19 state aid was $20 million. It is now $7.
Did you repeat that, Ms.?
Our 18-19 state aid was $20 million and is now $7. Here's a breakdown of our fund balance. Our budgeted fund balance that we're utilizing for 24-25 is $1.7 million. This is bad. It's very bad. We're basically using all of our quote-unquote savings to balance our budget. It's not good. So, we've got $500,000 left. Our excess surplus, this actually went up from the last time. They, auditor had made a mistake. They had a little over $300,000 as our excess surplus. It was really this 423, so that gave us a little more money. Here's a couple per people costs. Our per people cost, $17,480. We are $1,550 below the 22-23 statewide median of $19,000. Our administrative per people cost is $1,365, which is $1,0210 below the 24-25 southern region limit of $2,575. We are six lowest for admin costs for K-12 districts in the state of New Jersey. And this is a breakdown of all of our appropriations. This is basically the same. There's a couple of categorical differences. Again, this was, a lot of these differences are because of what the Executive County Business Official had us change from March to now. And then here's a further breakdown of our property taxes. So, we've got the two components. You have the operating budget and then the debt service budget. You take total current taxes and divide it by the total current assessed value, and then you multiply that by 100 to get the current tax rate. So, the current tax rate is 1.519. That's basically the same thing. So, we compare it to last year to see what the increase is going to be. So, the average home value for 2024 is $287,000. So, the school taxes would be about $4,359. So, when you break that down per month, it'd be about $367, which the change would be at $30.58 per month. So, now we further broke this down, right, that's the next one, to try to give a breakdown for more household values for the changes, so this, so you can see what the household change would be. Now, I just want everybody to remember, these are all estimates. This isn't actuals of what your actual change could be. This is all estimates. And this is only the school tax. This isn't your total tax.
And we'll have this chart up on our website as well. So, again, to Ms. Ormsby's point, providing this, we always talk about the average home of $287,000. So, we're trying to provide as much information as possible so you can see her home appraised at, I'm sorry, assessed. Assessed, thank you. Assessed at $100,000. We provided the figure there right up to $1 million. Assessing $1 million in tax impact is $100,000.
So, our next steps, July 5th. Excuse me. So, July 5th is a deadline for submission of the tentative budget to the Executive County Superintendent. June 21st, we're going to have the public hearing for the final budget, and then July 22nd is the deadline for us to submit the final budget.
And as we conclude our tentative budget presentation, like I mentioned earlier, I am sending out a letter to our entire school community. But first and foremost, on behalf of the Board of Education, it is really important that we say thank you to our entire school community, to our staff that appeared today, to our parents, to our business owners for making the call, sending out letters. Many of us went to Trent numerous times, I went over there six times. Our students were there, our parents were there, and, you know, we did not do this alone. This happened all throughout Mission County and beyond, and I do believe, and I mentioned it to our Board of Education, there are legislators that are, that are paying attention now and have never paid attention before. The big question that looms ahead of us is now that we are in the final year of S-2, what's next? And what is the funding formula going to look like moving forward? I personally have raised my hand. I've said to the Commissioner of Education that I want to sit at that table, and I want to have those discussions, because many times the decisions are made without the people who have boots on the ground or who have worked and have a really good understanding of the impact that these types of budgets have on districts like ours and others that have impacted, been impacted so greatly by S-2. So, I want to say thank you, and I will, like I said, follow up with a letter in the next few days that will outline this, and this will be posted on our website tomorrow. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move on to public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand when called upon, state their name, address, and affiliation, and attention to make a statement. Comments will be addressed to the Board President. Comments will be made one issue at a time. Comments will be limited to five minutes. The audience member shall be recognized twice and two all have commented and been recognized. This portion of the meeting is for public comment only. There will be no questions answered. The purpose of this Board meeting is to perform a business in public. Everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the Board, there is an established chain of command. Anyone like to make a public comment? Please state your name and address.
Yes, I'm Melody Pira, 1619 Comro. Regardless of everything, and I know you're trying to do the best you can, I am disabled. My husband's deceased. We saved all our money, we worked our tail off for years to buy a home in Lacey. I was very happy to do that at one time. Listen, I do not receive any funds from any government or anything. I still have to try to work. I cannot afford $1 a day. I cannot afford an increase of $0.2 a day. I cannot, I will lose my home, okay? I will have no hope of staying here, and I'm a gambler with Lacey residents. So, please, do everything you can, keep this under control, which I know is hard, but we all, all of us have suffered from inflation. All of us, you guys have too. We have to figure out another way. We have to work together. Please don't hit us, please, because I will not be able to. I will have no hope of this, okay? So, that's what I would say.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else have a public comment? I have a gentleman coming down right now. Please state your name and address.
Tony Rosoli, Sunrise Beach. I've been at this podium a lot of times. You know, I know that. I want to commend you for what I see of here today, okay? But I have some concerns, as I always do. I sent you emails to a couple of you, Mr. Bell, I believe, received one of them, looking and making recommendations for alternatives that maybe could face this issue in the long term. I didn't see anybody come forward with my recommendation being presented at all. I don't know if it was discussed, but it's something I think it should be considered in the future, not only for this district, but for this town, okay? Our current enrollment is less than it was when we built schools, okay? When we built Mill Pond, when we built our middle school, the enrollment is less. Yes, prices have gone up, the amount that we're paying our teachers, the benefits, it's all going up, the cost of, everything is going up for everybody. I understand that, okay? The thing that I have an issue with as a taxpayer is, we talk about, or our Superintendent talks about, the school community. What is the school community involved? Does it only involve parents, teachers, members of the school district? What does it encompass, the school community? When you said you're going to notify the school community?
Our students, our families, our staff members, and beyond.
Okay, and beyond. Beyond is the taxpayers who pay the bills. Why, if we have this, and you've worked so hard on it, and it's obvious you have, like I said when I started out, I commend you, but why isn't all taxpayers considered part of the school community? We pay the bills. Shouldn't we be considered as part of the school community? That's my opinion, okay? If a letter is going to go out, and you're facing these kinds of issues, I think that all the taxpayers should be notified as to what work you have done, what you have accomplished, where you have come from. And you know I've been up here a lot, and I know where you've come from, and I watch it very closely. it very closely. Now, if we do this increase, and we go from the 2% to the 9%, is that going to be presented in a referendum form? No referendum, just, there it is, take it or lose it. Take it or leave it, that's the way it is. So you get no input from the people who are paying the taxes that are going to be affected. That's why I'm questioning the school community only? No. It's the town, it's the village, it's everyone. It comes out of everybody's pockets, okay? So when you communicate what you're doing, communicate it to everyone equally, because my dollar, and I have no kids in the school, okay, is just as good as the parent who has 10 kids in the school, it's the same dollar. You understand my point? I don't know if you agree with it, but that's my point. The other thing is, my recommendation was, if our enrollment is going down, do we really need all facilities? Has it been considered? Can we move kids to existing other schools?
All things have been considered.
It all been considered.
And all things will continue to be considered.
Including selling Forkett River School and the land that it sits on.
Actually, yes, we have talked about that.
Good.
But we can't do that right now, because, wait, hold on, Mr. Rizzoli. You say that our, you say that our enrollment is decreasing. However, we did just expand with preschool. We now offer universal preschool.
Well, that I understand, preschool can have boosted it.
And when you look at our enrollment, yes, for the past 10 years, actually, not even including the last three to five years, because the last three to five years, we have held very steady without a decline. Prior to that, we did experience a decline, but that has relatively stopped. And now we also have to take into account all of the building that's going on and the influx of students that we are surely going to expect.
The affordable housing that the township has obligations for, when your liaison with the township committee, was there a projection as to the number or average number of children that would be coming in by the minimization of the affordable housing now that we've met most of the obligations in township? See, it's not only a school issue, that's what I'm trying to say, it's a town issue, okay? If we have less affordable housing that we have to meet those obligations, that's less families we have to deal with going forward. And that's the reason maybe I said in my email, consider Forkett River when all else fails and we don't have a football team. And we don't have any extracurriculars, because none of that, as you well know, is considered fair and equitable by the state. So you have no sports, you have no extracurriculars, okay? What are you going to do? At that point, you don't have a choice. As a fallback Plan B, not this year, maybe not next year, but if things don't change, you may have to really bite that bullet down the road. So maybe you got to start thinking about it now. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you for your comments, but I have one question for you. January 17th, February 13th, March 19th, and April 23rd, we had open public budget meetings.
I watched them all.
I don't recall you being there asking a question.
I wasn't here in town, but I did watch them all.
Okay, so please, don't say we did not involve the town when this was made up.
No, I understand what you're saying, but hopefully you understand what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying, but I want you to understand what I'm saying also. That you're saying that we do not involve the public and the town, you're wrong. I want to correct your statement and tell you, these are the dates, and I don't remember seeing you there.
I know, because I was not in town, as I said.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
I did send emails to certain individuals on this board.
I responded.
With my comments, you did.
Yep.
You had my feelings, you know, and I haven't changed.
Okay, you have your feelings, we have ours.
I haven't changed my feelings. But again, I want you to think down the road more, because if things don't change, you're really in trouble.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your hard work.
Thank you, sir. Sure.
Everybody, John Cattalo, Lenoa Harbor, South Street. So there is one thing I do agree with. Yes, we do have to look forward down the road, absolutely. This is a patch, a patch solution, okay? We're at the end of the S2 budget crisis that's caused mostly by the state. I'm not saying that everybody is innocent in this at all. Everybody has something to look, to look at themselves and say, you know what, we could have done better, right? That's just the way that it is. So the state reduced the funding. You saw that was up on the slide over there. The state reduced the funding. You saw it was a couple hundred thousand dollars in 2018, where it is $3.9 million this year in reduction. You heard them say that it was, we were getting $20 million from the state in 2018. We are now getting seven, $7 million. How do you expect to raise that by taxes? It sucks. Nobody wants their taxes raised. I don't want my taxes raised, and I'm sure everybody who's on the board doesn't want their taxes raised either. But it's an unfortunate thing that we have to look at, and we have to do as a society, Lacey Township, as a township, a society of, a group of people looking for the better interests of everybody in this community, everybody. And that doesn't mean me. What I've seen a lot of, especially on social media, because I'm sure you've seen my posts before too, everybody on social media, I see me for me, me for me. That's the way it is. The hell with everybody else, I don't care about that, right? So, right, so when we look at things, if you want to look in the past, why don't we look to the Native Americans that used to live here, okay? Go back to the Native Americans that used to live on this land. What did they do? Everybody who was in that, that group took care of the children that were in that group as well. Everybody. We should be doing the same thing, and that's what we do in taxes. So while you may not have children in this district, there's a lot of people that do, and there's a lot of people in this district who rely on the education system in Lacey Township to be as successful as they could possibly be. And that doesn't just mean a bare bones minimum education, coming in, learning math, learning science, although science is fun, learning math, learning science, learning social studies, learning the common core education. It is everything associated with it, everything. That is performing arts, okay? I'm here, I'm representing performing arts, right? I am the performing arts president, and I will be damned if I let anything stop this program for being successful. This includes sports, cheerleading, arts, any art program we have in the school, anything that keeps the children engaged in the school district, anything. Because it pains me to say it, and it gets me upset, that we've had too much loss in this town this year. Too much loss, too many lives have been lost, and why? I don't have the answers. But the whole thing is, you can't turn around and say, while we can appreciate everybody's personal issues, their personal responsibilities, there are some things, seniors, they can, they can go on to the Lacey website, they can appeal to not have their taxes raised, if anybody's looked into that before, okay? But if we're looking at that, the average assessed home is $287,000. Now, we are not talking about average assessed value, retail, resale value of your home. We're talking tax assessment, it's totally different. If you don't know what the difference is, you should look at your tax bills and you should look at how much your home is worth and how much your tax bill is. They are not the same. We have not gone through a reassessment since 2018, uh, 2012, sorry, 2012. So when you look at it, the majority of the homes in this town...
Five minutes, what happened in five minutes?
It just went up, sir, I wanted to finish the sentence.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, we let Mr. Rizzoli go a lot longer, we forgot to start the clock, we make mistakes. So soon as he's done his sentence, he'll be complete.
Thank you. So the majority of homes are more than likely assessed under $200,000. What was that, $20 a month? $20 a month, $20 a month.
How long is he going to go?
To help, I'm going as long as I can. About that. This is what I'm talking about, people like him who are not for this, but have no stake in the game.
There are rules.
Do me a favor, let's not start taking saps. Thank you for your comment, if you want to come back up again and finish, you can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to public comment?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Steve Sauter. My wife and I live at 402 Cranberry Court. We have two children within the school district. One's going to be in middle school next year, one is going to be going into the high school next year. And I have some concerns and some questions about the courtesy busing that has been eliminated from the township for next year. I realize, looking at the slide presentation, that it was only $260,000 that was eliminated because the courtesy busing was taken away. And I'm wondering, because I called the business office and I called the transportation office, and the answers that I received was that, no, it's gone, it's not coming back. I questioned about the money that was paid for courtesy busing in the past, and I said, what can we raise it up to? What can the new price be? Because as was mentioned here from a couple people with comments, there is nothing more important than our children. And it scares me, and it scares my wife to death, that my 11-year-old daughter is going to be leaving the house on a December morning, and is going to have to make her way to the middle school when it's still dark. People have said to me, oh, well, you got to arrange ride, you got to come, come, come together as a village, which I agree with, except what if my daughter's ride is not going to school that day? Then who's taking my daughter to school? I am also a school teacher, I've been a school teacher for 28 years, I leave the house at 5:30 every morning to get to my job. My wife is a nurse, she leaves the house at 5 o'clock. There's, there's, we have the courtesy busing now, we've paid for it. So my, my question, which I hope I can get an answer to, not now, but soon, what will it take to put courtesy busing back? Give me a number. Give me a number of what it's going to take to get courtesy busing put back into the budget for next year. What, what was the revenue that it brought in, in the past couple years? And what do we need to get to to make it possible now? Because I'm almost positive, I like to call that Haynes, Manchester, Lacey Road, Route 9, Square, those of us that live in the inner square, that's what I like to call it, I'm almost certain that there's going to be Lacey Township school buses passing through that inner square every day. The Barniget Lake Drive North is a thoroughfare, if not a highway, for those of us that live on it, all right? There's going to be buses that are going through. I'm sure something can be done. If there's already buses passing through the inner square, why can't they stop at one or two select locations and pick up the kids that live in that section if the parents are willing to pay for it? I mean, throw us a number. What's it going to take? It was, I think it was for two children this past year, it was $330 per family or something like that, $300 per family. What's it going to cost? 500, 750? My daughter and my son's safety is worth 1,000 or more, if it's going to mean that they have a ride every day and they're not riding their bikes or walking. I mean, there's beautiful days like today, my son wanted to take his bike. But there's also times where he's had his bike at school, and it's turned into a thunderstorm at 2:30, 3 o'clock, and he calls me and says, Dad, can you come get me? I said, well, no, I'm an hour away. I can't, you got to sit there and you got to wait for me to come back to town. I don't want my 11-year-old daughter walking home by herself, especially in the wintertime when it's dark. So I'm asking either the business office or the transportation department, throw us a number. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Richard A. Bidnick, good day, Lacey citizens and members of the school board. I have prepared remarks here, I do not want to be cut off, because what I have to say is very important, and I'm actually representing a large number of people who don't have a voice in this town, who can't make it to this meeting today because it's at 4 o'clock, when I think it's totally inappropriate to start off with that this meeting is at 4 o'clock when most of the family members and taxpayers have to work and they can't be here. Again, it's a lack of understanding of who pays the taxes that even allows this school district to function. Some of the things that I'm about to say today may make several people in this meeting hall uncomfortable, but the truth hurts, and someone has to say it. In a news article in the Lacey Patch, Mr. Peters, our school board president, was quoted as saying concerning a 10% tax increase, that in his view, it was worth it because the students come first. With all due respect... Rude, rude, rude. That's what's teaching our kids, folks, okay? The students come first. With all due respect, that is an utter falsehood. If Mr. Peters cared about the students, he would have done something a long time ago about improving the student achievement, especially after all these years that he has served on this board. But to answer that question, in all honesty, it's the taxpayers who come first, because without them, Mr. Peters, this school district would not exist. And it's a rather humbling fact that you just don't like to admit to. But on another note, what he meant to say is the friends and family come first. Translation, meaning keeping those connected in their jobs, no matter how high they have to raise our taxes. I must say, without any reforms, this school district does not deserve any more money. In fact, it wouldn't make much difference anyway, because there's still going to be a school district. They would just have to adjust, like many of us have had to do over the last several years with the horrific inflation we have all had to endure. It's called prioritizing, something this school district has never been good at. The board has known about these impending cuts for years, but instead of addressing them head-on, they kept on kicking the can down the road, just to keep the status quo going. But I have found that it's amazing what government bodies such as this can do when they have to. And by the way, who negotiated these contracts when you knew you didn't have the money to fund them? This board. Irresponsible. Three, I have a question to all these individuals who will benefit from this tax, 10% tax increase. What are you sacrificing? Are you giving up your step increases, your longevity increases, your cost of living increases? What are you giving up? I think I already know the answer, nothing. What am I and every other taxpayer going to get for this 10% tax increase? Nothing except a big fat tax bill. But I can guarantee you this, nothing is going to change, except our pocketbooks, which will be diminished with nothing in return. And by the way, the town is going to do a reassessment in the next year. So what they're telling you right now, our taxes are going to be going way up. I must remind everyone that you have a nine-month contract, summers off, Christmas break, spring break, teachers convention week off, plus a slew of paid holidays, plus great health benefits and the pension benefits, and tenure. Yet, you have no performance evaluations attached to student achievement. These are facts. The sense of entitlement is legendary, but this is just another humbling fact. I must ask the many parents of our students, where have you all been for all these years as this school district has continued to decline? You cry now because of potential cuts, but where have the mass majority of you been? I do have a... I do have a solid word of advice to all of you, please leave all of this emotion at the door. Because when emotion takes over, all logic is diminished. And I have seen and heard a lot of emotion without any real substance. If you really cared about your kids' education, look into sending them to a New Jersey School Choice Program District, or a private school, because there you are probably guaranteed a much better result. Many parents have already done this, and many more will continue to do so, because hey, if you really care about your kids' education, you would have been fighting here for a better education for the kids than I have last 13 years. Without reforms, and I mean serious reforms, it might be time for all of us to start having the conversation, to regionalize, because then your children will be able to have a more broad and better shot at education than that. The board has spent a very large amount of money defending itself with ethics violations, money which could have been used much more appropriately. There have been many other lawsuits which the school district has been liable for. But you can't help stupid, and stupid is as stupid does. In closing, I am utterly opposed to four individuals who sit on this board with connections to the friends and family network, dictating a 10% tax increase on all of us. It's just not worth the other pain it will cause all of us with nothing but the unacceptable status quo in place. The board has refused again to do its hard work, which it will take no figure this out. My honest recommendation to this board is this, take your legally allowed allotment of a 2% increase, plus any other state aid you can muster out of the recently enacted legislation.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. Should I just go back up?
Sure.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, hang on, I got other people to go. I'm so sorry. My apologies. Well, mic's back on, you're good. Go ahead, Mr. Sensa, it's all up to you. Sure we do, why not? Can't be any better than what he just said. Got it? You need help?
Regina de Sazza, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. I do have a question first. May I ask if any details on a recent lawsuit settlement will be forthcoming at next Tuesday's business meeting? And will that settlement be paid by insurance? I guess you guys don't know about it, well, it's been published, so... Not yet? Okay. And no one should wonder why there is a budget crisis here, because there's also a lawsuit crisis in this district. Mr. Razi keeps tabs, in fact, he wrote up a lawsuit scorecard to keep track of all the lawsuits here. The $420,000 from the LMUA. Did the district receive that money direct from the MUA, or did it come through the township again like last year? Ms. Armsby, do you know?
It'll come through the township.
It's going to come through the township again. It really shouldn't, that's playing chess with money. I hope the public does realize that the decrease in state aid coincides directly with a severe decrease in enrollment since 2010. 12 to 14 years ago, there was 5,100 students in this district. Today, 3,800 to 3,900. I am so far past disappointed with the finances of this school district, there just aren't words to describe it. What givebacks have been achieved? I know the answer, it's none. That six-periods Ipen with a new name should have been gone over 10 years ago. Sandra Brower tried to get rid of it. Would anyone even attempt to negotiate or hold out on that issue? Nope. Don't forget, I speak from experience and direct knowledge of being in the trenches of union negotiations several times. The order of importance around here is, contrary to what Mr. Peters claims, the students do not come first. And as Mr. Bidnick says, this district is all about friends and family. Someone once actually told me, "This school district is an employment agency for locals." I was very embarrassed to hear that. So, after staff and admin, the number-two slot is probably athletics and football. The number-three slot might be students and academics. The number-four slot is most likely the taxpayers who make this district possible. Wrong priorities across the board. Creating hardships for 90% of this township. A $61 million tax levy is unrealistic for a district with 3,800 to 3,900 students, it's just over the top. One of my friends and former board candidate, Melody Pryor, just stood up to tell you herself her personal hardships with taxes, and she have to may sell her house.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else want a public comment? Just please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Siegel, I live at 817 Tappan Street. I think it's a very slippery... First of all, I'd like to say, why would you have such an important meeting as this, at 4:00 PM in the afternoon? Most people are working, and they would like to go to this meeting, but they could not, because it's 4 o'clock in the afternoon and they're still working. So, I just wanted to get that out, you know? I just think it's a very slippery slope, everybody is struggling financially. There's so many people out there who are barely making it paycheck to paycheck, they're really struggling. And I think it's 10% tax increase is going to hurt a lot of people. And I respect the teachers, I do. I have a child that's going to be going into 8th grade, so I get it, I do. I want the kids to get a great education. But sadly, all the funding's going up north, the funding's not coming down here. That's the problem. Can we fight somehow to get more funding down here? It's all going up north, I mean, that's the problem, all the funding's going up north, and none of it's coming down here, you know? And... Yeah, I vote November, you know, but obviously, people are voting the wrong way. I mean, people are voting the wrong way, if this is what's happening, you know? And I think there's a lot of people who can't afford a 10% increase of taxes, you know, they can't afford it. Because every time you go to the supermarket, you could barely afford to pay for your groceries. I mean, people have debt, and that 10% increase is a lot, and that's all I have to say. And next time you have an important meeting like this, don't have it at 4:00 in the afternoon, because it's not fair for the people who are working and struggling, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else want a public comment?
Lisa Edgeworth, 49 Hilltuck Drive. Okay, so, there's a lot going on here, right? My son even went to Trenton to help facilitate this, okay? And to fight for these bills, so that we can have a school year next year. Because we care about the kids, okay? The school community? The school community needs to be people that care about the school attendees, the children. If you don't care about the children, you don't have children and you don't give a crap, then we don't care if you're notified about the school community, because you don't care. You don't really care about the community, you care about your money. There's a difference there, okay? And I'm not saying that every statement that they're saying is wrong. We do need to make sure we're following up on the bill that was submitted, and I know I've put it out there and have signed the petition for it, the bill, to get our funding back, okay? There is a bill out there. There's things that are out there that we, as a whole town, school community that you want to be a part of, then the fight needs to go to Trenton, and I think I've told you that before, Mr. Bidnick. The fight needs to go to Trenton. And as board members, as parents, as students, as teachers, we all need to make sure we're following up and taking care of this before next year comes, and at the same time, we're saying, "Uh-oh, now what are we going to do?" Okay? This is a one-time, a one-time fail-safe. We can't wait until the end of next year to do this. We all need to stay together, come together now, get busing back, let this man know how much it will cost to get busing for his children, okay? He's willing to pay. We have to stay together, come together, and get this taken care of, okay? And, I mean, that's all I have to say. But the school community are people that care about the kids that are in the schools. If you don't, we don't care about you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else want a public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Linda Miller, 1933 Glen Oak Drive.
I'm sorry, could you...
Linda Miller.
Oh, thank you.
1933 Glen Oak Drive, Forkett River. I'm very passionate about our town. I've lived here for 50 years. When I first moved here, I had no children. After 10 years, I had a son. He came to the school system, and it was wonderful. But for the 10 years that I did not have a child, my attitude was always, "Your community is only as good as your school system." And I know for a fact that this school system now is not like it was then. The tax raise, I don't even know... For someone to say that we do not... I do not have a child in this school system anymore, but I live here and I love this town. But to say that we do not care about our children, it's absurd. Because our children is our future. And the economy, the way it is right now, I can't even think that you would think that the people that live here that don't have children... Just because we don't have children now, doesn't mean we have loads of money. I'm like in my 70s now, I don't want to move from this town. The only reason I would move from this town is if my house was taken away from me. I don't have... I don't, I've had my own business. I don't have medical insurance. All the things that teachers don't seem to include in their salary. To actually have good insurance, like schoolteachers have... I have many friends that are schoolteachers. I love them dearly. But their benefits, they don't even seem to figure that in to their salary. So... I realize you pay for it, but you don't pay for all of it. All right, so, okay...
Just let her speak, please, thank you.
So, okay, so the teachers have also paid for part of their school, their health insurance. I myself... I don't even want to discuss my health insurance, but anyway. The point is that I am a taxpayer, I am retired, I don't have any... I don't even know what it's called. Money, after you retire, you will be able to still afford your homes. And the taxpayers in this town are important. Very important. Because we love this town, we want to stay here, we want our school system, but if it's not as good as it was 30 years ago, there's something wrong. And it needs to be fixed. And I know you work hard at this, but as you work through the problems of this budget, and to have people applaud and to make noise when someone else is trying to prove a point. Just because you don't like the point, doesn't mean that you should be cutting off the microphone or whatever. I mean, that isn't... We're a community, we're supposed to work together, not against one another, just because of money. Because we all have different amounts of money. And the older people that live in this town have lived here a long time, they paid a lot of taxes, and we want to stay. But you're not going to have the revenue you have when the government comes and says, "Guess what? You have to move because you can't pay your taxes." And that's what it's going to end up if it's not stopped now. There will be not good things happening here, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. I meant to point to you, but she thought I pointed her out. You're good, you're good.
Hi, my name is Mary D'Angelo, I live at 724 Maple Road in Lenoka Harbor. My daughter has been a big part of this fight. For the teachers, the activities, for all the things that are important to her and the students. She has organized petitions, come to every board meeting to speak, and rallied the kids to join in the support for our school. And I am very proud of her for what she has done. Thanks. Unfortunately, she can't be here tonight, because she has to work. She does have car coming and insurance, so... Believe me, I don't want our taxes raised. Money is tight for all of us, including our school teachers. Right. However, I want all of our children, our future doctors, lawyers, electricians, plumbers, dancers, and artists, to receive the best education they can. So, I support our school board in raising the taxes, and I thank the MUA for their donation. Dr. Pereira, as you want to be a part of the discussion in Trenton, as a person with their boots on the ground, I want to be a part of your discussion in Lacy. As a view from a parent, we need to think forward, we need to think about next year and the year after. I want to thank the board, Dr. Pereira, and most importantly, all of the teachers, for all that they do for all of our children. Thank you.
That's how I feel. Hi, Matthew Holmberg, Pine Forest Lane, Forkett River. And I am gainfully employed in Lacy Township Schools, so I don't know which hat I'm wearing right now. I've never wanted to come up here, I wanted to come up here, but I never have, because I wasn't really sure what the rules are as an employee. But I'm also a taxpayer. I started paying taxes in this town in March of two years ago. I've been teaching in this town in three different buildings. I started in the high school as the band director in 2004. In 2016, I was transferred over to Mill Pond Elementary School. And this past year, as part of the reshuffle, I was moved over to the middle school, where I do 6th, 7th, 8th grade band, and I teach 6th grade general music, which are very large, ambitious young children, full of life. And I'm tired. I moved here, I've been teaching in town for 20 years. I left teaching in Toms River, I taught there for one year, and I loved it. One of my bosses, the boss who hired me, is Mrs. Walker, who was one of my favorite principals, no offense to Mr. Zlinski, my second favorite principal.
I'm nobody's favorite, sorry.
I didn't use Mrs. Walker to get a job at the time, and I've never used Mrs. Walker for anything in the 20 years I've been here. She's just been a great person to say hello to, and when I bumped to her, it was a wow. She's just been a great person to say hello to, and to see when I bumped to her, wah-wah. I don't have any thoughts, because I wasn't gonna talk to anybody, but when I started here, when I started teaching in 2002, I was teaching out in Warren County. I'm from a small town in Pennsylvania. My family's all there. I have no family here. I made friends, my fiance is here, I met her at Mill Pond. And we all make choices. Everybody in this room has made a choice, and will make choices going forward. I made a choice to leave my comfort zone and to leave my family in Pennsylvania, a small town where my mom has two acres of land on a beautiful mountain that's, could have been mine, and had a nice, comfortable life. My mom pays about $600 a year in property taxes, which fund everything. I didn't make that choice. I decided I wanted to see what it was like to live by the ocean. Yes, that was the choice, and I had some friends here. And I didn't realize that I was going to be, 20 years ago, stand here and talk to you. I am well aware that paying taxes is not fun, but I moved into this town from a place where I was paying $10,000 a year on a house, and that was in Tuckerden. $10,000 a year on a new-build house. And I moved here because the taxes are low, and I also moved here because after being here for 18 years, I wanted to have some sort of buy-in to the community where I teach. This is where I plan on retiring from. And I wanted to see what it was like to live in this town and to be part of the community. I was nervous to do that. I was nervous to, just from the standpoint of running into people at the stores, it was nice to go on the parkway and go to my other town and just kind of live that existence. But I came into town because I've been here, I've been teaching the children here, I now work with some of those children or my colleagues, and it's a great school system. It's not a perfect school system. We can't let perfect be the enemy of good. It's... We try. We try so hard. The people that are on social media, some of the people here tonight who are angry, some people who have words, and I've had words with on social media, you don't know. You have no idea what goes on in the classroom. You have no idea what we're doing, what we're fighting against every day. Our hallways are full, our classes are full, and are getting more full every day. And we show up, and we love on these kids, and we were there for them. Sometimes, I open up the cafeteria in the morning at 7:15 every day. That's my first duty of the day, every day, 7:15, I open it up. And we have a pile of kids that come in, sixth graders mostly, to eat breakfast, because maybe they haven't had a meal since the lunch we served them the day before. And some of these kids are living some hard lives. And I'm sorry I'm getting emotional, but it's money. It's money. It's money we're talking about, and I understand. I don't want my taxes raised. I heard the alarm, I want to respect the time. Nobody wants their taxes raised, but we're doing the best we can with what we have left. It's, I don't know what else to say. I'm just here to advocate. I know, I thank you for what you've done. You have no idea, you're a taxpayer, request permission to come in, put a little visitor badge on, come in the hallway, see what it's like to come in our classrooms. We're doing the best that we can with what we have. And thank you to the board and the administration for helping us out along the way.
Thank you. Anybody else pop a comment? Ma'am, I'm gonna let her go. I'm sorry. Thank you, sir.
Hi, Stacy Feug, 214 Conifer. Didn't plan on speaking, not a public speaker. I'm actually a paraprofessional, and I hang out with little kids all day, so this is not my forte. But I just wanted to come up, because I have a different perspective, I feel. Those two little ones up there, Charlotte is going into kindergarten. The thought of 30 kindergarteners in a room is terrifying for a mama. And that's Jackson. You actually made a comment about him, about taking off his hat. Sorry, he's, um, he's going through a lot.
Want to take your breath and go back? You want to walk to...
Jackson is in the MD program over at Lenoka. He's going through a lot medically right now. And the thought of 45 kids in a classroom for him is terrifying.
So Stacy's little boy, Jackson, is part of our MD classroom, and she's trying to let you all know that how hard the staff and her kids work every day. And her concern as a parent is to make sure that her children are safe, that we have enough staff to help them, that Jackson has the staff that he needs to get him to the places that he needs throughout a school day. As a paraprofessional, her wage is not...
And no benefits, by the way.
So she is, so she does not have the package. She is not on the track to receiving a contract, so she probably works for below $20 a day. She owns a house, $20 an hour, I'm sorry, $20 a day would be a lot, sorry. She owns a house here in town, so the taxes would also affect her and her husband.
My husband, who is disabled, actually, we also, that's something that we also deal with.
Okay.
We deal with a lot, and, um, thank you. Like I said, like you were saying, my son is an incredible little boy who just wants, he's been thriving through amazing people like Penny Burr, who's his teacher, who's even picking on that role right now with him. And so I just, I beg you to pass this, from a mama's standpoint, from a tax's standpoint, from everything, we just, we need this. Our kids need this, our future needs this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Sam Magno, I live in West Town, Fort Worth, Forkett River. I just want to say, I recently retired. I've been in the finance business for like 40 years, and every time there's a budget crisis, it always seems to hit the bottom. We always had a comment, it worked, whenever there was a budget problem, whenever there were cutbacks, there's always the Indians that are, it's never the Chiefs. Comment we always made there was, there's not enough Indians, but there's a hell of a lot of Chiefs. I don't see any Chiefs getting cut, it's always the teachers that are getting cut. Why isn't any Chiefs getting cut? That's all I want to say.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else pop a comment? Did you want to go?
She can have a hand up first.
I didn't see you all, who else had their hand up? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, Dana Zezza Torto, Quail Hole Drive, Lenoka Harbor. I was not expecting to come up here and speak tonight, so forgive me if I'm a little nervous, but I come to every single meeting. And Mr. Bidnick, I always hear you, meeting after meeting, talk about student achievement. I'm gonna tell you something about student achievement. My son, who is now in eighth grade, has been going to high school. At two and a half years old, I was told he would never be able to go to a mainstream school, look into an institution, non-verbal. My son is now mainstream, they're getting straight A's, and a lot of his teachers are here right now. So when you talk about student achievement, that is achievement. Achievement is a look in his eyes when his principal hands out ice cream for getting straight A's because of them. My daughter, I'm looking at Mr. Holmberg, my daughter comes home happy and healthy, she's happy, healthy, excited to come home for things she's taken part of, that's student achievement. And I felt I had to just come up here and tell you that, because I hear it every single meeting. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Lita, I live at 700 Meadow Lane. As a parent and as a community member, I had some questions that hopefully the rest of the documentation will kind of help answer some questions about whether things like pay-to-play and how much money those things will cost, whether there will be other co-curriculars being cut, you know, how else the budget was balanced. I'm curious to know, you know, whether we can afford it or not, you know? You know, kind of like the, this mister who was talking about, you know, can we afford the busing, you know, can my family afford it? And I want to look into that. I also want to talk about, just as a community member, I notice, and I think it's a common misconception, that a lot of teachers are like kind of, excuse my southern expression, but like living high on the hog. And it's, uh, it's not exactly that. I noticed when I looked at the rehire list, not a single non-tenured person at any of the schools my kid goes to, my kids, excuse me, were first listed. And as a non-tenured person, or as a person who moved here seven years ago, I teach in another district, and I live in Lacey, I, at tier five, you should really look up what teachers get at tier five, and how you don't get any health insurance for your family until you become tenured. So if you continue to be, you know, kind of let go because of budget cuts and whatever, you're never gonna get what some people have thought of as this, teachers have it so great. And I'm sure some do, and that may have been an old-fashioned notion that some people still hold on to. But just to look at that, and maybe I'm kind of pulling on some heartstrings about, like, you know, I'm thinking about where are gonna be the new teachers, you know, where are they gonna be the younger generation of teachers if they can't afford to come into Lacey? We want new teachers, we want younger people, we want some retention of people who care, you know? And it's unfortunate that a lot of people had to, you know, get that slip about, you know, you're not gonna have a job. They're already interviewing elsewhere, you know, they're already looking elsewhere, and they're, they have to for their own families, and many of them live in town, I'm sure, so they also are part of the community member, members that, you know, got pretty much essentially, you know, let go, not fired, but you know, let go, you've been ripped, and they need to figure out what they're gonna do as well. And I just hope that we can come up with something. If it has to be taxes, I don't know a whole lot about taxes, but I liked the breakdown, and if it's a, if it's a temporary measure, you know, by all means, it will hit me as well. I'm a teacher in another district, I don't make all that much, but, you know, and I'm a tier five, for any of the teachers, like, I'm never gonna get above that. But I, that's just because unfortunately, I started teaching in a different state, so sucks to be me, right? But here I am, and, you know, looking at it from both sides, I appreciate the work you guys have gone into, and I look forward to reading more about what that's gonna mean for us. Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment? Did you want to go back up, sir, or finish?
I just wanted to come back up here. I know we were a little bit heated before. It's a lot of heated comments that were being made here. But I wanted to first thank the MUA for their donation, obviously. That was not something that they had to do, but it was something that they did, and it assists us in the township with a little bit of a relief of the taxes. But the biggest thing that I wanted to do is, I wanted to come up here, and I wanted to thank every single one of our educators in this township. Every single one of our educators that has taught my, my oldest child, who is no longer in the school district, my middle child, who is graduating from the school district this year, and my youngest child, who is in the middle school. I want to personally thank you, because I, my children, have had a wonderful experience going through this school district. They were able and afforded to have a quality education, they were on honor roll, okay? They got a quality, a quality education, they were able to be part of a group of children that just wanted to see everybody to be successful. And I think every single one of our educators that are in this township, all want to see every one of our children in this school district be successful. Otherwise, why would you be here? Right? Why would you be here? You don't go into teaching for money. You go into teaching for the heart, for the love of it, okay? I wanted to be a teacher. Unfortunately, I took the safe route and I went into IT. So, but I, I just wanted to, to come up and say that, and I know there's a lot of teachers that are here, and, and I want to say thank you. And if it means that we need to raise taxes to do this, then so be it. That's what it is.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
More comment, Mr. Bell?
Well, really quick, I want to apologize to Vanessa Pereira. I was supposed to call her today with my answer, and I did not. But it's a complicated situation, it really is. I don't want my taxes to go up, but I've lived in the district for 24 years, put my kids through private school while continuing to pay my taxes and support Lacey Township. And so I see the value of it. There's a lot of, if you've heard me speak before, you know that there's a lot of concerns I have about what's taught in the school. I think that's why Mr. Peters put me on the curriculum committee, and I appreciate that. Just really quick, Mr. Holmberg, you're from a small town in Pennsylvania. My mom's maiden name is Holmberg, from a small town in Pennsylvania. You may have family here.
That's my favorite.
We gotta stick together. But I, I'm, I really appreciate the whole district and all that's been said, all that's been done. I even like the tension, because we gotta have those conversations. And hopefully, we can look to next year and it'll, it'll get better.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Mr. Mott?
Yes, thank you all for attending tonight. I know the meeting was early, and I do agree, we should have the meeting a little later for people that, that are working late, it's only fair. This is a very tense topic. There's a lot of heated opinions. We have many residents in this town, obviously, we only have a small percentage here today. There's so many different sides to it. As a person who had three children that graduated from the Lacey District, and I also have a two-year-old great niece that lives with us that may go up through the school district and may start pre-K when she turns three, I know the importance of the teachers. I just know that there are a lot of people in this town struggling as well. People are working two and three jobs, some people can barely afford to eat and pay their rent. The last thing I want to do is price people out of this town and have the families that we are trying to help, have, we price them out and have them have to leave the town, because that is a possibility as well. I know this is a temporary, but 9.9%, you have to remember, whatever your taxes currently are, once it gets increased, it will not go down, it will only go up from there, from additional taxes from the town and from next year's school. This is a temporary fix, and we don't know next year, we may be in a deficit as well next year and have to raise taxes again. We don't know that, right? It's unseen.
We will.
We will. So this is just fixing this year. So I know everyone's, we're very easy to spend others' money, but we all have to, the situations that we're all currently in, we have to be kind to others, because we have no idea, we have to walk a mile in somebody else's shoes. So it's easy for someone to say, "Don't have a Starbucks, don't have a Dunkin' Donuts, don't have this." We have no idea if that person's paying a medical bill, we have no idea if that person's eating that night. So I think we need to be a little kinder to one another, we're all gonna have differences of opinions. There are, what, 30,000 residents in this town? There's a lot of taxpayers. So I would just ask us all to be a little respectful of each other, and whatever's decided tonight, know that everyone, every, unless we walk a mile in someone's shoes, that $30, $50, $60, $70 a month could really mean the difference between a nightly meal, paying a bill, paying an electric bill, paying a water bill. Also, we have to remember that in our town, we have small businesses. When the taxes go up, they just hit residents, they hit all the people that have businesses. So if your landlord's taxes go up, your rent's going up, it may be $50, $100, $200. You have small businesses that may have to close, you have small businesses that may have to increase their prices of the stores that you go to. So just take that all into consideration. It's not just, it's just $30. It's, it's a bigger picture. So that's just all I ask, that we be respectful, and just think of it that way as well. That's it, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr.? Ms. Claus?
Yes, I just wanted to touch a little bit on a few things. Mr. Rosoli, we did actually talk about closing Fork River School, that was a big topic. We did get your email. It's just, it just can't work. We would like to sell Fork River School, to have the money, can't happen. We have too many students, we would be shoving the teachers in other schools. We did look into it though, just not feasible. We also looked into split schedules, someone else mentioned. We looked into everything, and we can't change anything. This is where we are, this is our, with our student body, our schools are full. So I just wanted you to know that. The courtesy busing, I didn't catch your name, but I'm the finance chair, so we're gonna talk, we'll put that on the agenda, Sharon, if you don't mind, we'll just talk about it again. But it was a decision to cut it because it's not required. And 200,000, it saves teachers' jobs, so that's, that was the decision we made. But we'll definitely talk about it again. Also, one quick thing, I did come across something on social media from the Ocean County Social Services for the senior citizens. There's something going around right now, it's the property tax freeze. You just, there's a few qualifications, I don't know, I just heard about it, so I don't know if everybody else heard, everybody heard about it. You have to be 65 and over, own a home in, in New Jersey since 2019. Total income for 2022 was 150,000, I think that's a lot. And for 2023, 163,000. A few things that would disqualify you would be owning a second home or vacation home, exempt from paying taxes, and a couple of things. So it's just something to look into if you're a senior and you don't want your taxes raised, apply, okay? Okay, so now to the board members. What does a no vote mean? A no vote is a loss of 4.2 million dollars to our district. So what does that mean for us? Increased, increased class sizes, well over 45 students per classroom. Reducing our staff by another 45 to 50, which does not include the 35 that we already cut this year and the 6.5 million that we cut this year. So that'll be 10 million dollars in one year, you just can't do it. Reducing paras to part-time, we have some full-time paras left. We fought hard to keep those paras full-time. That, it would be cut. Slashing all sports and co-curriculars, our students would get out in high school at 1:30. We had some unfortunate deaths this year. We can't let our students go home at 1:30. We need to keep everybody in school, everybody engaged, and be a part of something. Not to mention, it would be a huge slap in the face to the advocacy group committee, who successfully reached out to parents, staff, and our community to help us fight against Trenton, to pass this bill with the letter campaign, phone calls, which actually I heard they shut off the phones when our teachers, thank you, started calling, because there was such an influx of calls. And the students who came in and spoke to save, spoke here, we listened for hours how they wanted to save certain programs. And the students admin and the parents who testified in Trenton. They did their job. Now I think it's our turn, board members, to do ours. We need to pass this. So what does a yes vote mean? An average increase of 30 dollars a household per month. That is it. So let's save our kids, save our schools, and I'm hoping everybody votes yes. It's our duty, we are Board of Education members, and that's our job, is to save the schools. So it's a yes vote for me. So I'm hoping everybody else votes yes. That's it, yep, thank you.
Mr. Conity?
I said it last May, and again, nobody wants their taxes up. I don't. As a parent of a, two students here in the district, they can't be in a class of 40-plus kids either. I could sit here all night, who, I can't afford, but I'll be in favor of it. Thank you.
Mr. Armato?
I, I don't want anybody to lose a job. I know what that feels like, I've been out for a long time. And I feel the pressure of not having a job. And I sit here every day and, and somehow, some way, through the grace of God, my, my family manages. We're managing. It's not about the teachers, this is not about the school. This is about everybody that lives in this town. Whether you could afford it, that's great, give us a donation. But we're not thinking about the people who can't afford it. Everybody keeps saying it's only 30 dollars. It's only 30 dollars. Let me tell you what it really is, it's a Band-Aid. It's a Band-Aid so we can keep our doors open for one more year. One more year. And we're saying we trust the state. What the state did was brilliant. We wrote all these letters, we made all these phone calls, and I know we didn't make phone calls to ask for 9.9% tax increase. We called to get money back. And the state said, you know what, you want money back? Ask your people to get it, raise taxes. Raise taxes. We ran away from England for a miserable tax on tea, and now we're raising taxes to 9.9% and everybody's okay with it because everybody has this phrase of it's only 30 dollars. 30 dollars. 120 dollars. What does that matter? If it's, if it's good for you, doesn't it mean it's good for someone else? And I think that's, that's what's getting lost here, is nobody, nobody wants anybody to be hurt. Nobody wants anybody to lose a job. What we want to do is be able to do this the right way, so we don't have to do it again next year and the year after. I've sat in finance meetings with my peers and with this administration, and I asked, what's the plan moving forward? How do we prevent this from happening? What's the five-year plan? What's the six-year plan? What's the seven-year plan? Right now, all we have is a Band-Aid. Let me ask you this. If we have to come back next year and tell you guys we gotta cut another 30, 40 jobs, will you be happy then because we said yes today? There's gotta be a better way than just putting it on everybody here. I want everybody here to be employed. I know the feeling of being unemployed. And I don't want anyone to lose a job. And just because we don't vote on the budget doesn't mean we have to get rid of teachers. It means we go back to work and we figure it out. There's ways we can figure this out. And I can't just keep saying tax increases, tax increases. And let me tell you something, everybody matters in this community, okay? My son doesn't go to school here, doesn't mean anymore, but I sit on this board and I fight for students. I fight for taxpayers. I fight for everyone in this town that elected me. Because it wasn't just the school community that elected me in this seat, it was everyone that lived in this town. You want to follow what the state tells you, that's fine. A little pushback doesn't hurt. I know for a fact, we didn't call the state to ask for a 9.9% increase in, in tax increase. We called the state to get money back, and we didn't. We put it on you. We put it all on you, and on me, and everyone that sits on this desk. I'm, I'm not as fortunate right now as some of you who can say it's only 30 dollars a month. When chop meets 15 dollars for three pounds. I make 30 meatballs and we're good for a couple of days. All I'm saying is, it's, there's gotta be a better way. We're too smart and we're too competent to be incompetent right now. This board I'm talking about, there's gotta be a better way. And all I'm asking you is, if we have the time, let us, let us go back to the drawing board and figure out another way besides 9.9% increase in taxes. Thank you.
Ms. Walker?
Hi, everyone, sorry I came here late. So this is a Band-Aid. I have to agree with you there, Sal, it is a Band-Aid because next year, here we go again. So we can't stop fighting. Thank you, you guys, for all the time you spent going to Trenton and administration going to Trenton. And, and yeah, the state screwed us, excuse the expression, it's not as bad as what Mr. Bittnick said over there, screw them, the, you know, the state. They, they turned it over and said, yeah, let's tax your, your community. I'm 74 years old, I own a very small home, two-bedroom home. I'm retired, I work part-time just to bring in more money. But I support this budget because I took an oath 31 years ago for the kids in this district. And I'll be damned if I'm voting no, I have to vote yes for the kids in this district.
Did it?
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
I'm gonna make my insurance sweep. Tell my signs, it's always first, so you're now voting. Let's move on. Adoption of amended tentative budget for the 2024-25 school year. Motion move that the board adopt the amended tentative budget for the 24-25 school year. Can I have a motion, please?
Call motion?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
No.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
No.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, motion to stabilize school budget aid grant program and increased tax levy cap. We have a motion, the board accepted stabilization aid grant for the 24-25 school year.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr., Mrs. Armato?
No.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
No.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
And Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Uh, where's the little guy? Can he come up, or will he come up here? Jackson, can you hear me? Come here, bud, you were really good, come here for a second. Come on up. Jackson, Jackson, give that butt. Can you swing this for me and say, I'm in charge? Thank you, have a good evening.
I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.